Good evening. We will be starting the Board of Trustees meeting for January 11th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation under God. And the principle of justice for all.
Will you take your role, please?
Trustee Mears. Trustee Hartshorn.
Yes.
Trustee Music.
Yes.
All right. We'll next be doing the consent agenda. Matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote of consent. There will be no separate discussion on these items. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. So we have the meeting minutes for the December 14th regular Board of Trustees meeting. And it's for the December 31st, 2021 special Board of Trustees meeting. The approval of bills. Being paid for the period of December 1st, 2021 to December 31st, 2021. Electronic warrants 303-2021 through 339-2021. And check numbers 36710 through 36796. I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Trustee Mears.
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn.
Yes.
Trustee Music.
Yes.
Fiscal Officer report.
Date on O�ers. A claim has been filed with Travelers against the previous fiscal officer Vinkens bond. Current totals that's been filed with them is $23,855.98. We will need to have a special meeting sometime between now and the end of the month. Because we'll need to look at how we're going to cover those costs. I'm holding off a little bit because everything has been filed with Travelers. If we can get reimbursed back, we won't have to do so much moving around of appropriations and stuff to cover that. So I'm going to try to wait as long as I can, hopefully follow up with them and find out if they can give me a better timeframe. Then we'll know a determination on that one. I've been working on the year end. The revenue budget has been entered for fiscal year 2022. As well as the temporary appropriations have been entered. Per resolution 2168 that was passed December 31st of 2021. By the Board of Trustees and it has been filed with Montgomery County Auditor's Office. New purchase orders have been created. We also, I need a motion for resolution 2103. Since our reorganization meeting, I received documentation from Montgomery County Engineers. For approval of the township highway system mileage certification. It looks like the township has dropped a little bit. They've decreased what we're responsible for as far as the mileage in the area by .068 miles from 2021. So our new mileage certification is 18.202 miles. And it requires a resolution from the trustees as well as a signature from the trustees. Of acceptance for me to get this submitted back to them.
You said that number was 2203 or 2103?
20, oh, sorry, should be 2203. And 21.
I make a motion to accept resolution 2203 as proposed. For mileage reduction to 18.202 miles for Perry Township responsibility. Second motion.
Trustee Music.
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn.
Yes.
Trustee Mears.
And then just the only other things I have is I did attend in early December, the UAN year end update. As well as I attended the auditor's year end as well. And then upcoming events, I'm going to be attending on January 24th. A probably the Office of Budget Management have come out with the final rule for state and local fiscal recovery funds program. So I'm going to sit through that webinar. And then we've got the OTA conference that I'll be out of the office from January 26th to January 28th in attendance. And that's all I have.
Cemetery report. Terry, uh, report. We had a total of 26 burials this past year. Pleasant Hill had 16, Eversole had eight, Paramount had two. The fence from Pleasant Hill has been picked up and it is on its way to Arkansas. We have been given, or we've got our test page back from Patrick from Oasis. I put together a first page and entered documents to go, how to search our cemeteries. For name, the whole nine yards. It's vague currently. He would like to sit down with Karen and I to go over exactly how it would work, the ins and outs of all of that. So we haven't had the opportunity to sit down with him yet, but we, he did give us a test page for that. Pretty neat, I look forward to that. For Senator Patrick to. Give us a quote for it. And then going back and forth on design, the cost of that's $425 for four signs. Hopefully, depending on how we design it, how we come up with everything. It's quoted at a three foot by four foot sign right at the entrances to the cemeteries. Uh. Kind of just kind of talk about our outbuilding, like what our plans are for our outbuildings at the cemeteries. Are we wanting to put money into those to be painted? All the whole nine yards, we clean them out, we've been cleaning them out, getting rid of old debris stuff that does not need to be there. I didn't know kind of what your thoughts are, what you're, what you're looking at, or what you're wanting to do going forward with those outbuildings. Got a call in to get a price together for chip and seal for our driveways and the cemeteries. I haven't heard back from him yet, I just called him today. We've, we started cutting stumps off at Pleasant Hill. We've got a quote back on cutting the three trees down at Eversole. One, one price for cutting them all down, hauling everything away and grinding the stumps is five, $5,500. $2,500 to cut them down, leave the debris, we hauled all the way and they would grind the stump out. All the stumps, all three stumps. Our equipment, our dump trucks are set up for snow and ice. They're, they're ready to go. Took the red dump truck over to S and J. We want to test our lights and everything, our back, our taillights, nothing worked when they just worked two weeks ago. Anyway, so we took it over there to him and all it was was our back taillights were just hand tied together with this finger tight. So they were corroded, he replaced all that. Got them back working and our one ton was also over there, fuel lines completely corroded and we had a huge fuel leak. Not hugely, we're all in, but there's fairly good puddle on Monday morning, we went in there, so we had to get that fixed. So he got that all taken care of for us. We sold our air compressor for $510. We also sold our three old weed eaters for $67. Our buildings, we just got our building looked at for black mold. In the corner above our entryway. And we got a quote back, just, just one back so far, we have three. I should expect three. This one is a $6,500 report, repair the mold damage. That would be put back where we could paint it, they're going to bleach it, put disinfectant sanitizer, whole nine yards. We're also waiting on a roofing guy to show up tomorrow. He's going to look at it, see if there's a leak there. Compared to if it's coming into block walls, where, where that moisture is coming from. Also got a quote back for spray foam for our cold storage side at $2.50. $2.50 a square foot roughly for our walls, we're looking at $5,980 and $6,500 for our ceiling. I just got a list and a quote for lumber material for, for our office area break room combination. So I don't know if you've seen our building, but in the insulated side, we apparently where our break room is. Where we have a refrigerator and just an open table. I'd like to kind of move all of that and then be able to use that storage, but move all of that up front to where offices are at and kind of rearrange. Put a new bath, not a new bathroom, but just rearrange our bathroom and make that our office, kind of make it our home. We actually have a place to hang our coat. But that's like a cost of $9,481 and that cost is good through the end of January. Like I said, we have a door company and roofing company coming tomorrow to look at the entry door and the front, the side entry door. To our offices areas because you can't open that or close it without putting quite a, quite a bit of pressure on that to open it. Missy couldn't get out of it. And our backboard as well. And then our roads, we've been patching potholes on Amity Air Hill on Stecker Road. I still haven't heard anything from the ODOT grant, but that's not expected till really February. And we've just been spending a lot of our, this last two weeks on our inventory list. On the office, trying to move everything from last year to new, this new year and try to organizing, so. That's my report.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
Now we can maybe session, talk about these.
Yeah. Yeah. And we can tee that up.
Something else, Vic from FEMA, the watershed program at Wolf Creek. We meet with him on Thursday, I didn't write this on here, we're supposed to meet with him and the contractors to go over their. What they're looking at, what their bids are, the whole nine yards, and then what our half is and what we're supposed to be expected.
We still.
What time on Thursday?
It's 12:30 to 1.
Where are we meeting him at?
At the, where the landing area where they will stage everything, which is on Denlinger Farms. Right off Wolf Creek, Missy and I went out there and looked at it today. The landing for that. Material wise, what we're expected to get rid of in, in two weeks is a. 100, almost 100 feet, 200 feet wide by about the length of a football field. And they're expecting that to be stacked three, three to five feet high across the whole thing, we are expected to get rid of all that. Which is a large sum with a very, very old concrete bridge. That I wouldn't trust my grandma to drive across. I've drove across it twice, but my grandma would drive. Anyway, our dump truck is going across there, they're going to, they're supposed to put a low flow entryway, the contractor is. And that it's supposed to be a 401 slope back and forth roughly figuring on his end, Vic's, that's a $14,000 investment. That if we cannot work with the contractor to get our stuff out in time, we have to provide that.
And I don't know if any, if you, have you been there? Have you seen where this is at?
I haven't seen that area specifically. Because every time I go to do it, they push it off and.
Yeah. It's right there where Doc Young lives and on Wolf Creek and you either turn. So you're talking this big dump truck full of all this. And you got someone coming off of Wolf Creek and down Wolf Creek going 40 miles an hour.
Yeah, I remember them saying something about the. The area being hard to run trucks through and even the tracks.
He didn't find, but I didn't think the pickup truck was going to make it through.
It's, I mean, it's a tight turn with a pickup and you're, you're on, you're probably a little bit over the yellow line when you come out of there. By the time you pull up enough that you can see traffic coming out of town.
Right.
You can't see anything coming over the hill. So there, Vic is wanting us to put signs out, which I don't know where the technicality falls for that, that's not our code.
Right.
Most general projects.
Chief Jerome.
We're going to have to talk to Vic because I have some major concerns about this, this was agreed upon and.
Yeah, the, the trustees were not looped in.
No.
When a lot of the agreements were made for this.
Right.
And there was a lot of.
Yes.
Machinations, I'll say, behind the scenes that have since been shot down. So. Concerns are very valid and, and we need to kind of work through that. And figure out, because to be honest, I, I know we can't just afford to pay upfront to have the stuff removed if we can't do it. The, the whole key to this was our in-kind labor, right?
Yes.
So, Trustee Mears has been running point on that for the last couple of years and I'm sure she'll handle it.
But that's, that's if they, if anybody would like to come and see it, you know, if you can send one trustee, so that'll be trustee Mears.
Okay.
Well, if you guys want to go, I think everybody should take a look at.
Just to see what you're, what we're looking at.
Condition the grounds in right now.
It's froze up right now, it's pretty good, but the.
Day of freeze.
It's, it's froze up currently today when we were looking at.
Okay.
Still froze up, I, you know, that's subject to change at any given time, right?
That could, that could change.
Yeah.
The whole condition of the area they're going to dump in.
Yes.
For us to be able to get in and out.
I imagine that will be a muddy mess, let alone the road. I mean, once they get out to there, it's going to be a disaster.
If we could, if we could go through back in Terrace Park, that would be a better solution. Yes?
That, that would be our closest trip, but then you have Denlingers that were crossing his farm field with heavy equipment. Most every farmer is 100% against compaction. Or we would make, if, if we just had two trucks, I don't, I don't imagine we're going to be making several hundred to 250 trips across there. Fully loaded, plus we gotta go through Terrace Park.
Yeah.
Mud.
No, it's, it's.
Yeah.
I mean, I imagine we'll accomplish it one way or another, it's just, uh. I don't.
The church, the large field behind it. There to, to the, to the Terrace Park. We have any access back through there?
I don't know if there's any access to that. Because that's all, you would have to go through the field through the, and all that, and that's all Brookville, what they're concerned with. I don't know that we could get any way to there.
Okay.
The best option.
We may be just too close to us broke at that point.
Yep.
Yep. Would make sense, okay.
The best point would be at the sewer plant.
If they could get it to that point, yeah. And I don't, I don't know how it was laid out in front of us before, as far as this is where we want our staging area to be. I don't know how that come about or why it was or.
That's definitely a topic with Vic.
Yeah.
Other concern with, like, snow and ice, I just want to know a clarification or rough, what your thoughts and opinions and, and about snow and ice? What our expectations are? When we should call it, like, I went out Saturday night, I drove another concern, not a concern, but I drove my personal vehicle around. It was just as easy to drive my personal vehicle as is to go down the township, get a vehicle, switch, change, and then go look. I just made a loop in my own personal vehicle, I don't know what your guys' thoughts are. Concerns with that. And then just what our expectations are for snow and ice. Are we going out? Every time, you know, are we, the county wasn't out, I did not see a county truck. ODOT I know was out, but they are out at every flurry or any chance that it could possibly potentially maybe happen, they're out.
And I've asked Chief Littleton, whenever your officers are on duty to call you.
Right.
So.
So I talked to Officer Payne, I went out at nine, I was out almost till 10, I got back 9:55. One bridge was slick. You know, common sense, most people drive, if you drive a common sense, knew it was slick. But do I, do I, is, am I supposed to call somebody in, should I, should I go and put Saul down just for that one bridge? I talked to Officer Payne at 11, it was like 11:50 when he called. I told him I would check, four o'clock, got up, it's 37 degrees, I walked my road, I did not find any ice there, so I didn't drive.
Right.
That was my discretion, so I just. Some feedback, what, you know, what's your thoughts, what, where are you guys at, what you think we should be doing?
Think it's best judgment? That we maintain and it's slick, treat it.
Yeah.
You know?
Or if they call you, or if I call you, or someone's calling me, I'm going to call you and say, hey, you know.
Right, I, I mean, I have no problems with any of that, I just, I just was.
Now, we, we do have a, a map of the roads that the township's responsible for on the township website.
Yep.
It, it's something, so people can see, you know, what is the difference between a county maintained road and a township road? You know, so that is helpful.
For me.
All right, thank you. Police Department report.
Start off by asking the trustees to pass a motion for a pay increase for Officer Wynn. To $18 an hour with an effective date of Monday, December 27th, 2021. He was passed his time to receive his raise.
He had 16.
He's either at 17 or 1750. Can't recall off the top of my head. I have a team.
I make that motion to. For Officer Wynn's pay to go to H. Melchior.
Second.
Trustee Hartshorn.
Yes.
Trustee Mears. Trustee Music.
Yes.
Over the past week, I've completed our yearly inventory and submitted it to the fiscal officer. We have some applicants in the hiring process. We're going to start doing backgrounds and things on those applicants as they continue to move forward. Working on gathering all of our stats from 2021, I'm hoping to have those completed by the end of February. I am at the mercy of the Regional Dispatch Center. The individual that was in charge of all of that has been reassigned. So once they get somebody into his position, get them trained and up and running, then I'll be getting those from the county and then publishing them. Like I did la, or the previous year and everything, they'll be available on our website and here is a hard copy if anybody wanted to pick up. Same reason for the December stats. With that individual being out of that position. So once I get that information from the dispatch center, our December stats will be posted to our website as well. Charity, I meant to get with you and you were bringing some things up. EMA, did they ever reach back out or did we reach out to them with who's going to sign that contract?
They have not, I have not heard anything back from them.
Okay, I'll follow up with them and let them know who the three trustees are. Or if the trustees just want one signature on the contract for EMA, that I can let them know how to set up that signature block. So that once they have all their ducks in a row, they can ship it over.
To be me.
Okay.
Here, okay.
Subpoenas have been sent out for the Taylor Walter case for the homicide back in 2020. Trial is set to start February 22nd for that week, so. We're just doing some prepping, last minute touches and meeting with prosecutors and going over everything prior to that date, so. Other than that, that's all that I have.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, trustee, sorry, zoning report.
Sorry. First, I'd like to thank everyone for their calls, their texts of condolences and the cards of passing of my mom last week. And I'd like to thank all those who helped me out by completing things that needed to be done while I wasn't here and I really appreciate that from all of you. I'm still assisting Caleb with the cemetery deeds and the burial permits. On, let's see, the first quarter trash bills were mailed out January 7th, 2022. So everyone should start receiving those this week. I'm working with Trustee Mears and Susan Cardbell from Montgomery County Landbanks regarding some properties in Paramount. There were seven certified letters that went out to the owner and the lien holders. And they were mailed on 12/10 of 2021. I've received six of the seven green signature cards back. And once I've received the last signature card or the letter as returned to me. I will be forwarding the information to Landbanks so they can schedule the demolition of the first property in Paramount. Trustee Mears and I attended over Zoom a meeting this morning with Landbank State Building Demolition Program. And I was told the demolition of one of the properties in Paramount will be scheduled for late summer or early fall. Since the last trustee meeting, I have not issued any permits. There is a nuisance abatement hearing scheduled for Thursday, January 20th, 2022 at 3:00 PM here at the Township Meeting Room. And the next VZA hearing has been scheduled for February 3rd, 2022 at 7:00 PM. That ad will be coming out in the Brookville Star tomorrow. I will be sending out courtesy letters or letters of violations to 14 residences. That I've received complaints on and there are more with junk and debris. The neighbors are tired of looking at the mess and they want it cleaned up. The nuisance abatement hearing. Will be scheduled for each of these, depending on what they do. On that. I also will be out of the office January 26th through 28th for the OTA conference. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee reports. For the Township General Information Technology Work, continuing to update the social media and digitization of documentation. Perform general IT maintenance to upkeep township PC systems. I've been researching moving the new, the meeting room monitor into the lobby because the lobby monitor is. It works 20% of the time. And this monitor has been deemed a little big for the meeting room. Can't see Karen over it and she can't see around it. So I've been working on getting a quote for a 10-inch monitor. Just for this purpose and then we'll move this one into the lobby. And this would fall under what we set aside under ARP IT funds. I believe that the cost, I, I sent you the price for that, it was under $130.
Yeah.
So. If there's no issues with that, that would just. It doesn't require a motion or anything to buy that, it's just for a level of awareness so that you know that it's being spun out of that pot. The email and domain management migration has taken place, we are now completely on our new provider. I worked with both the old hosting provider and the new hosting provider to mitigate issues during the migration. Performed archiving of all the old Host Poppe emails. So they're not in a super readable format because they did a dump. But I do have them, so if there's something that was in your old inbox that you need. We could fish it out, it's just not going to be very clean, but we will get the meat and potatoes of it, okay? And I will be getting with Host Pop around the end of the week to terminate our services with them. So that we're completely off there and we should be getting prorated funding back. Because our contract went through May of '22. Set up the new email accounts and configurations for post-migration use by township employees. And we did have a slight delay because the old hosting provider had an automated process that took seven days to migrate a dot org domain, which we have. For the maintenance garage, I set up the two PCs and have helped with the printer. Luckily, Mr. Hoops was very adept at setting up the printer and getting it registered for us. I have ordered the wireless adapter that'll be here within the next week or so. And that invoice has been forwarded to the fiscal officer for payment. Continued weekly driving inspections of township roads, cemeteries and nuisance properties. For webinars and meetings. I'm preparing for the OTA conference at the end of January and I did attend the US Department Treasury. SL FRF, which is basically their final rule for. The ARP funding, what's allowed, what's not allowed. And lastly, I did participate in the annual inventory, I tried to get most of the stuff here and between Karen's office, the lobby and the meeting room done over the weekend. We still need to assign some dollar values to some of that stuff, but the stuff that's new, that's been acquired, I put those values in. But like the chairs here, the tables, stuff like that, that I wouldn't even know what to assign value to. And I don't honestly think that those were being done before.
No.
So. If you don't mind, Trustee Mears, I'd like you to take a look at it because you've been familiar with the township.
Longer than the rest of us.
I don't think there's any argument there. And just assign any dollar values for that furniture and equipment. And that is all that I have, Trustee Mears.
Okay, so like Ms. Kaler said, we attended that Zoom meeting with Landbank, which was very well, we've been working on this for what, year and a half, two years? We've got this all submitted and after our Zoom, we felt very. We've got this all submitted and after our Zoom, we felt very confident because we're headed, we're ahead of everybody else. So, right, yes. So, that's great news. I've been working on another project on Brookville-Pearmont Road, a house that we're having some issues with. Talked with Chief Littleton regarding that. And I talked to a Ms. Connor at Houston Woods.
Houston Woods.
Yes, with the spring. The spring is shut down and will not be opened. They did a water sample on it on 12/21 and they found chloroform. And it was at 32,000.5 and it's recommended at 3100. So, that's why they shut it down. And they will not open it back. So, it's done. I have this paper if anybody, and I'll, Charity, I'll give this to you so attach it to evidence. Tomorrow, I'll be attending the prayer, no, Thursday, I'll be attending for breakfast that Brookville's putting on and also the OTA.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Trustee Music. So, I don't have a lot, obviously. I did attend the MVR PCs meeting in November after the election in place of a trustee when. I think we're going to talk about this later potentially, MVR PC. There is potentially some remaining funds from the Dayton Foundation of four tornado relief if there's still a need. Again, we'll talk about that later. I don't know that there's a lot of need left Township. Also be attending the OTA meetings at the end of this month. Decided to get started, so thank you.
Welcome. Happy to have you and we're going to definitely work you. All right, old business, is there any old business that we have to get into?
I don't know anything.
Old business? Okay, new business. I have three things that we need to start working on. The first of which is fire levy. Have to figure this out. I had spoken with Ms. Keaton at the OPWC meeting back in December. And I believe, me personally, that we could probably get done what we need to get done. Probably a 1.5 mil capital improvement levy. Don't hold me to that. But that's definitely a point, a full point down from the 2.5 we tried to propose. So, we're going to need to start working on that to get that ready. There's no way we're doing it by May. The, the May election costs a lot more money to implement, and we've learned that. So, we need to have that start hitting its stride in the next two months so that we can comfortably get that planned, worked out with the, the two fire departments and municipalities that support us and have something ready for the ballot by, I would say, the end of August. The other is the police levy. And I hate doing two levies at the same time, but to be totally transparent and honest, the last police levy that was done was, didn't include a number of things. It didn't include the non-operational overhead that comes out of the police budget every year to support our salaries, fiscal officer salary, as well as the officers, being able to bring in officers at a comparable level to the surrounding areas so that we can bring in quality officers sustain their employment for a long period of time. We don't want to be a training stop on their careers. I think initially, when the police levy was done, they were looking at standing up a 24-by-7 shop. It wasn't necessarily sustaining a 24-by-7 shop, which is very different. And we are now at the point, after I think doing the budget or the appropriations last year, January of '21, we saw just how thin those funds were running because now that we have a 24-by-7 police force, the amount of money that's coming out of their budget, even with the trustees last year vowing to only bill a set percentage every month. And I think it was between 15 and 20% per trustee to try to make that impact as little as possible. But that means that we had to do more in other areas to offset that because we couldn't like say we're not going to work the police stuff. We had to offset in the, in the sense of the percentage is the work we're doing. So, this is something that's going to have to be worked in parallel, but separate. I had a brief discussion with Chief Littleton, letting him know that, you know, there's some, some research and some math that we need to do as it pertains to training, equipment, comparable salaries within a 25-mile radius of our Township, as well as what it costs to sustain them, whether it's a fixed percentage, cost of living increase per year at 3% or something similar. Training incentives and other things that would help us maintain the quality force that Perry Township serves. So, trustee Mears has been working with the police for years and I have no desire personally to interfere in that. So, I, I think as we start heading down the path of planning these levies, there will be, we'll come together at the Board of Trustees meetings and discuss and even have special meetings if we have to with the party, the stakeholders. But mostly operating those separately as much as possible. So, that we don't confuse the messaging, we don't confuse the numbers and we don't confuse the residents. Try to keep it, this is not something that we want to do, but by law, we're required to maintain and, and pay for these services. So, this is something that we have to dig into and do our due diligence on. Any comments on likely two levies that we're going to have to look at for this year? Sure, you have a solution in your back pocket?
I, I, the one thing I'm going to say is I had the meeting with the chief Littleton on it and was, was pretty shocked at the salary compared to what we see everything else as far as job, you know, wages going up and up and up. We have to stay competitive with that if we want to maintain a quality police force. So, there's, there's just no question about it.
The other new business topic is, is membership in the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission, which trustee Music mentioned them briefly. Last year, we turned down our membership because the, the money was tight last year in the general fund and did not have the, I think it was $1,200 or $1,500 to pay to be part of MVR PC. There was nothing that was on there, planning for 2021 that we needed to be part of. So, we just let them know that we would not be participating last year. They were kind enough to keep us in the loop, keep us informed. Trustee Winn attended their, their meetings, albeit remotely, I believe, for most of '21. I did too for early '21. So, one of the things we have to consider is, is do we see value in rejoining the MVR PC this year? Or is this something we push off for another year? So, with that, I'll ask opinions, thoughts on this. It's, it's nothing that has to be decided tonight, but it's definitely something we have to consider in the coming weeks. So, I'll start with you.
I say push it all.
What's that?
I say push it all.
Push it up?
Yeah.
What are your thoughts?
If we don't have anything pressing that requires their assistance, then we can go off another year.
Well, then, right now, we don't need a motion for that or anything, just to say that we're going to understand that. If you want to reach out to Ms. Wiger, let her know that we won't be participating this year, but appreciate any information or inclusion they want to include us in.
I will say on that, the meeting that I did attend with them, the other areas that were hit by the tornado are still working their way up. And this area did a fantastic job of making sure that all, everything was taken care of. So, I mean, it speaks, it speaks highly to our area.
It does. Is there any other new business, any topics for discussion?
Yes, the handbook.
The handbook. I actually mentioned that a couple of times this evening as well. Probably not with you, I think it was with this glossary. I know that we talked about this last year and it's something we needed to work out. We talked about how the police department's done it and if we wanted to follow that path or if we wanted to work with OTARMA to get that done. We actually had a topic come up regarding the outbreak and the part-time employees. And after talking to OTA, we would have to include in our policies something regarding administratively, which is something most municipalities have. It's decided on a case-by-case basis and we don't have anything for that. So, that's another instance where that would come into play.
I have one that I started, Erin's got it on her computer and I can print it off. It's not, you know, but just what I started and you guys can take a look at it, go through it, suggestions. I think, I love Chief Littleton's idea that there's, we cannot.
We can't afford it, no.
And I don't know, when I called and spoke back, I think her name was Lisa? I can't remember, it's been a while. It could be broken down into phases.
Yes.
At things, instead of doing everything, if you did like chapters one through three, just to get an idea of what's going into this. And I love Lexipool, it's written by nothing but attorneys. They do all the, the research and stuff for you. You get all the, you know, case law, you're up to date on, you know, FLSA, you're up to date on best practices and things of that nature. And it makes it very easy for the admin to go in and make changes. It tells you if this is federal regulation, if it's a state, if this is discretionary or if it's best practice. And then you know what, you have some wiggle room in to change and things. That's what I love.
I was very impressed. She said, no, if this changes and you don't know it, so you didn't change it in your handbook, we're going to change it for you, so.
What was the price on that? Did you have one?
It was $47,000.
About what?
$47,000 for the whole book.
Not 40, I thought it was like around $11,000 is what you guys were at. I'd have to go back and pull the email. I don't think it was $47,000, that's.
It's expensive.
To establish it, but you're talking about establishing it, not. It was, well, that was an all.
Yeah, that was everything, you know, to get everything, yeah. It was, it was up there.
It's more pricey for, for this side of the house because when you're dealing with first responders, whether it's fire, EMS, all across the nation, a lot of things are cut and paste based upon case law. But when you get down to municipality level, it's more specific in what you're wanting as trustees. And so, it's a little bit more tailoring versus just a, a copy paste. Well, and I know that fiscal girl was mentioning that OTARMA has some free resources that can help with that as well. So, maybe we can see what we can fold, what makes sense to fold in, what doesn't. And we'll, we'll start with reviewing what's been done. Okay, any other new business? All right, visitors, Mr. Warble.
Brad Warble, Crawford-Tombs Run Road. I was wondering if we had any updates on the missing money and the grand jury.
Superior returns are starting to come in from the bank and that's all then forward BCI.
And then at some point, Phil, the grand jury will decide whether there's criminality involved?
We already have charges. But the prosecutor's not going to do anything until the complete investigation's done. But by the time this is all done and over with, we've already got charges approached.
Okay, thank you. Is Sherry Huff, that correct?
Cheryl.
Cheryl Huff.
This concerns Pleasant Hill Cemetery. And I just kind of want to give you a brief history. I live on Clayton Road, lived here for 30 years. In 1995, my father passed away. My mother and father lived in Dayton, but we checked cemeteries and we picked Pleasant Hill because of its country charm. My brother died in '96, he's also there. And my daughter died in 2016. Starting in 1995, we, my mother and I, which was still living, planted gardens. We maintain these gardens, just, just, you know, a little garden around the, the plot. So, I watered, mulched, you know, weeded, deadheaded. My mother and father's grave, my brother's grave and my daughter's grave. My daughter's grave also had some handmade pavers that my son-in-law made. That's my daughter, Olivia. Much to my distress, a few weeks ago, I went out and everything was gone. All the plants were gone, the pavers were gone, the wind chime was gone. I just wonder why in, you know, it, it certainly doesn't fit my idea of beautification. You know, I, my upkeep of their plots, I've done it, you know, since 1995. So, I'm, I get the fact that it makes mowing easier. That's the only reason I can figure that they did this. So, I just want you to be aware of the impact it had on me. I mean, that was the way I honored my family. So, I wondered why, why that was considered beautification.
Right, so. So, you, it wasn't considered beautification. It was considered, we had a number of rules within the Township Cemeteries that hadn't been followed in decades easily. Right? The problem was is that those rules not being followed didn't change the fact that the rules existed. And last year, we put a company on contract to mow, we maintain the cemeteries because cost-effectively, it was more cost-effective for us because we don't have the money to dedicate manpower to clean the cemeteries, to mow and weed cemeteries because we have a very small workforce. So, at that time, after the previous cemetery and road supervisor was fired, we brought in someone new and we started looking at what the framework was. What rules haven't been followed? What work hasn't been done? What hasn't been documented? And we've been trying to get back to a baseline of where things are supposed to be. That said, there's been signs posted in the cemetery for at least a couple of years now saying that stuff would be taken off. If it's on it, unless it's on a headstone, that it would be removed April 1st, October 1st of every year. That said, we, we had our cemetery and road department go through and clean stuff up, take it out to the road garage. And we posted through the only means that we had, which was through our website, through our Facebook, saying that these things would be held for X amount of days, I believe it was two or three weeks. And that people could come and pick them up. And then at the end of that, we had no room to store them and they were removed. Your, your story is not the only one. And for that, I'm deeply sorry. But we cannot fix the fact that something, that a number of things were allowed to happen in the face of the rules that were established. All we have are the rules that are established for maintaining those cemeteries that everybody signs when they buy a plot. We didn't have an efficient way to reach out to every single person because a lot of the people that are buried in those cemeteries, they have no next of kin that we have on file. So, we used the methods that we had at that time. So, I understand your feelings.
I don't think you do.
I, I, I do because I had the exact same thing happen in the cemetery of my father's grave. And it's, it's not something that I knew about because I didn't take care of his burial. And stuff kept disappearing and I thought someone was stealing it. And stuff kept disappearing, and I thought someone was stealing it. And it wasn't. It was that that was part of the rules that established for the cemetery he was buried in. Now, I've only been a trustee for, this is my third year. So I only know the last three years. I'll be very honest with that. Trustee Mears has been here for, this will be your ninth year, correct? Sorry. Speak to the years before I was a trustee. But just in the last year and a half is when we've had a lot of trying to get back to where we can sustain the cemeteries. We don't make money on the cemeteries. We, we pay a lot of money out to sustain them, and we have very little coming in for that. We've even talked about having to do a cemetery levy. Most townships run a cemetery levy because cemeteries don't sell sustain. Once you sell all your plots, that's all you got. So taking the extra time, having the additional manpower that's dedicated to maintaining those often requires a one to one-point-five mil cemetery levy. And I'll tell you honestly, the people in this township, they don't even want a fire levy when they need fire services and we're required to provide them fire services. So the fact that we have to lean on the rules of the cemetery to ensure that they're able to be sustained within the means manpower and the money we have to do so. It's not optimal for people that have been let to do whatever they've been let to do for the last three, four, some people, five, six decades. There's a number of things that have been done in those cemeteries that should have never been done. And unfortunately, that falls on the past personnel that allowed that to happen. All we have are the rules that were, that have been established. They're not new. And we enforce those to ensure that, one, the mon- the money that we do have to be able to have them maintained. Which, as I said, the contract that we put out there was more cost-effective to have someone else mow it than to have our, our people do it. Is still, I think the, the new quote is about eleven hundred per mowing of all four cemeteries, right?
Per mowing.
And they mow about nine or ten times a year. So right there, I mean, you cemeteries do take a number of resources to maintain sustain. And to this point, I don't think that we were on a path, we're still not really on a path to do that as well and efficiently as we can. Sometimes the, the scales have to be unfortunately balanced one way or the other. I will tell you that in the future, we've already said, well, we've said here in the last year or so that a cemetery levy is very likely in the next couple of years to maintain cemeteries. We're running out of plots at Pleasant Hill, Eversol, Landis is almost at capacity. Right? And Piermont is the one that we still have. So we also have to look into possibly expanding those, which for the township to do so must acquire funds to do it. So when I say that I understand, I mean that in the most logical of terms. Emotionally, I don't understand. You're, you're absolutely right. And I'm not going to tell you that I do. And I don't think anyone up here will say that. But I will tell you that all we could do is what we did. And it was established in the rules that have been established for a very long time. Does it make it feel better? I definitely didn't feel good when I started seeing, I believe you made a post on Facebook. I know another woman had made a post about a per bench.
I mean, would I, you consider maintenance dilemma or problem? I considered beautification. So whatever you say, I mean, all they had to do was, I mean, it wasn't a big spot. You know, veer a little bit with their lawnmower instead of going, you know, and I, I weeded around the gravestones and everything. I understand what you're saying, but it doesn't, it doesn't help the situation.
Understand.
You've taken the charm out of the cemetery. The iron grating and.
So, so if I, if I remember the stuff that you said on your Facebook post about the iron grating, most of that fencing was almost horizontal with the ground because the ground movement was pushing it. It was very unsightly. It was unsafe. The archway at that cemetery is unsafe. We found out last year, we got a grant of a thousand dollars to repaint it, patch it and repaint it. We had five masons, four or five masons come out, and every one of them said it's so unsafe, you need to tear it down today. Stuff wasn't taken care of. Stuff was let go. And we are the ones at this point in time that unfortunately have to ensure that it's safe, that it's manageable, and that the rules are followed. Because once it's left open to interpretation, everyone interpret what they want to put on the graves, and it becomes unmanageable very quickly. We lean on the rules because it's all we had. I do apologize for the, for the impact and for how it's affected your family. But at the same time, the township had very limited ability to do anything other than what we did. Because as I said, we talked with the prosecutor's office. We came up with a plan based on the rules and the signs that have been posted about stuff being cleaned up off the graves twice a year. And we executed it. It's not gonna make anyone feel better or okay with what we did. But because of what we have to do and how we have to do it and the resources we have available to do it, that is what we did.
As, as a whole in our department, we, we didn't take gratification and and having to clean them up as well. I mean, I, I told you on the phone about it. I apologized. It's not, it's not ideal, but that's what was ahead of us, and that's what we did. And, and I did say, you know, I apologize. I, like I said, it hurts to do that. And, and you're not the only one, like Jason said, that had to. I mean, I've, I've handled several phone calls. Give me everything you can think of. No hard, no, and that's not the way it was handled. That's from my heart. And that's being honest. It's, it's not ideal.
I didn't do Facebook because I don't do Facebook, but I did emails. And I've gotten a response from two ladies. I emailed, so I wanted to let you know a response would have been appreciated.
So I, I believe I've got your email. It was forwarded to me last week. You know, obviously. I read the Facebook post and I was, I was upset about it. To the point of, is this right? And I went back and I, it was, the rules were actually even posted on the website of the township. And I believe they were made in ninety-three. So, going forward from this point, someone else will not have to go through what you did. I apologize as best I can. That we don't have to deal with this again, because I know it's this board's, it's this board's decision to, to make sure rules are followed like they haven't been in years past. But that's the best that we can do.
Well, and, and if I could add one more thing. Because of how this took place and the things that have, we took a really good look at how we can communicate with people that, that have loved ones at the cemetery with any level of certainty. And one of the things that we took away from it was is that although our list of rules is long, there's a couple of townships within thirty, forty miles of here that have these huge signs that have every single rule posted on them. We have started taking the steps to get signs made for every Perry Township Cemetery. I think the, the current draft was what, about six feet tall, seven feet tall?
We're trying to work on one that's three foot wide by four foot tall. The other one, if we follow, put every rule on there, depending on the font we go with, it could be seventy-two inches tall. So.
And that's, and that is the broadest way to deal with managing and people to know what can be done and can't be done in cemeteries. So we are taking steps to ensure that we don't have something like this again. So, that, that was one thing that we did come out of this with is, you know, we couldn't send certified letters because we had had the money to do that, and we didn't know who to send them to because, like I said, a lot of relatives and next of kin aren't on the paperwork that was signed for the initial purchases of the graves. But this was one thing that we could do that ensures that everyone that enters a cemetery in Perry Township is aware of the rules. And moving forward, can honor their loved ones in a way that ensures that it won't be taken down again. Regardless of who's the trustee, who's on the, the cemetery department or anything else. Okay, Olivia Huff, did you say that you had anything?
But my question is just, like, within the last couple of years, I understand what you're saying to my mother, but the trees coming down, the fence not being, you know, put back up, the archway. What are the, what's the plan for this, you know, to have it stark?
Well, the trees, I'm gonna start with the trees because I, we did the trees. The trees were dead. So if they would have fallen and, you know, broke a monument, then we are responsible as the town.
Are they going to be replanted? Like, what is the end goal?
We do have trees that are planted at our maintenance building out back that the soil and water has given us. And they're trying to get them, you know, they're not big yet. Our goal is to take down the archway to make it safer. We'd like to put in a new road in the cemetery, the driveway, because I'm sure you've seen how bad it is. That's why you were talking about a cemetery grant because we have, yeah.
Well, we can't, I mean, grants for cemeteries are like a thousand dollars. They have to be used specifically for what you supply the grant for. So you can't get multiple grants to work on a single project. So we would have to get like a cemetery levy, bring that money in. And also, having the ability to have people contribute ideas. You know, the, the cemeteries belong to the township. They don't belong to us. So if you have ideas of stuff that makes sense, you know, whether it's fencing, the problem with the fencing is, is that, that based on the slope that's there and the movement of the slope, it makes it very hard to put stuff there that won't at some point end up perpendicular to the road, right? So, that was one of the ideas that we talked about last year, was having residents contribute ideas, thoughts of, you know, we replace the archway. I know at Piermont, we have a metal one that's basically just says Piermont on it. But we want something else. Now, there's not, nothing saying that people couldn't donate or people couldn't contribute or someone could even help with the work to build it. We have a lot of options here because it's it's the way that we more than likely have to do it, just because of the money it would require to do a number of things. That's where we would talk with the community, lean on the community, and see what we can get done, right? And it would be an evolving plan. It wouldn't be something that would be a one and done, and we walk away from it and say, okay, Pleasant Hill's done. The way that the cemeteries are today, as Mr. Hoops was saying, you've got outbuildings at each one of those cemeteries that have been used to store some stuff. They've got holes in the roof, holes in the sides, holes in the doors, doors coming off the hinges. We've just got a lot of stuff to clean up, and, and we're trying to do it as smartly and cost-efficiently as we can. Anything that would alleviate those constraints where people can give us ideas and stuff like that. We've talked in the past about establishing committees, possibly standing up a cemetery committee chair, or with residents as participants in that community or committee, sorry, to help us come up with ideas, options, plans. Would definitely be one way to go with that. So.
And I know a couple of years back, we had talked about maybe trying to get the park to donate some land adjacent to that or adjacent to that. So we could make that cemetery bigger. So that, that's always a possibility. And we're hoping that they'll donate it. We haven't got that far yet, but yeah.
We're, we're kind of jumping down their throats about the spring right now.
To keep the whimsy of the cemetery, one of the selling points of that cemetery. I, I haven't been to the others. I can't lie. I don't know what they look like, but one, you know, it was chosen for a reason. So to keep it, you know, as beautiful as we can would be really nice. So if there is a committee, you can, I mean, I don't know, who puts that together?
We would just establish a committee. A trustee would likely sit on that committee and chair it. And we would put word out to the township through the means that we use for meetings, Facebook webpage and Brookville Star. And say if you're interested in participating on this committee, contact trustee X at this email address and phone number. That would probably be something, once it gets warmer, that we would look into doing because we, like I said, we've, we've still got to figure out the taking down the archway. Because that's got to happen before the spring thaw, probably. Because that, when that ground gets soft, it's gonna start buckling really hard.
Every time we go through there, we have to move some masonry of some, somewhere, there's always something that is falling off of it.
Definitely not arguing with it. Yeah, not at all. So, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
And that was all I had. Is there anyone else in attendance that had anything that they wanted to say? All right. Any, anything else from trustees? All right, at this time, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Music?